Kilby?
Here.
Malabri LeBeau?
Here.
Long? Pelletier?
Yeah.
Viveras?
Yeah.
And President Ponte.
Here, if everybody in the chamber can please rise for a moment of silent prayer. Thank you, and a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands with one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pursuant to the open meeting, law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendances therefore advised as such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. Madam Clerk.
The first item before you is a communication from the mayor and the resolution authorizing the five-year annual action plan.
To adopt?
Motion to adopt the five-year annual action plan has been made by Counselor Kilby, seconded by Counselor Viveras.
Roll call.
Discussion? Hearing none, roll call. Counselor in seat one?
Can I ask if it could be a friendly amendment so that we could do it subject to or approval subject to the fact that somebody on the sixth floor does not receive any salary increase or stipend or contracts?
The motion to adopt with the amendment that there is an individual on the sixth floor that is getting a stipend to not get a stipend?
Yes.
That's a, that is an amendment to the motion that has been made by Counselor Kadim. Is there a second to that motion?
Your only question I would ask?
Counselor in seat four, sure.
Is that within our thirty to amend the document?
You can place any restriction on any vote you want. Doesn't mean it's gonna be.
I would, I would say it's within our jurisdiction to do so. Whether the mayor objects or that we get a letter from Corporation Council, we'll have to address it at that point.
Second.
There's a second to the motion that has been made by Counselor Pelletier. Any further discussion on the amendment? Hearing none, roll call on the amendment. Madam Clerk, if you could read that into the record one more time so there's no confusion.
It would be that the item would be adopted with the restriction that the stipend...
Just the, just the amendment at this point, and then we can do adopt as amended.
That a restriction be placed, that the party on the sixth floor, the stipends for the party on the sixth floor not be authorized.
Can we just put stipend slash contract?
Roll call.
Mr. President.
Oh, sorry, Counselor in seat seven, Counselor Pelletier.
Could we specify who it is?
Counselor in seat one, your motion is you would like to specify who it is?
Monica Souza.
Monica Souza. According to Ms.
How much is the stipend?
Eight thousand dollars. It was eight thousand dollars. Out of a twenty thousand dollar funding source, we were told that it was all for storefront facades.
Counselor in seat six, your point of information?
Eight thousand dollars doesn't come out of the twenty. Twenty is just for the program. The eight comes out of somewhere else.
Point of, just point of clarification on that, I specifically asked the twenty thousand when we were first told that the twenty thousand was specifically for the storefront facade grants.
It is. Ten projects.
Ten, ten projects, right. Then I followed up and I said I, it was under the assumption that there was a stipend or somebody, Monica Souza, was getting paid out of this. And that's when he said, "That's correct."
But it's not paid out of that, that, twenty thousand is specifically for that. The eight thousand is paid off of another piece in the, in the, in the program, and it's a contract that they have with the mayor's office. They've had them, they have them.
Any further discussion on the amendment? Hearing none, roll call.
On the amendment, Counselors Kadim?
Yes.
Joseph Kamara?
No.
Stephen Kamara?
Abstain.
Kilby?
No.
Malabri LeBeau?
Abstain.
Long?
No.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Viveras?
No.
President Ponte?
Abstain. Motion failed?
Yes, Mr. President.
Motion to adopt the current order that is before us would be appropriate?
So moved.
Motion to adopt has been made by Counselor Long, seconded by Counselor Kilby. Discussion? Roll call.
On adoption, Counselors Kadim?
No.
Joseph Kamara?
Yes.
Stephen Kamara?
Abstain.
Kilby?
Yes.
Malabri LeBeau?
Abstain.
Long?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Viveras?
Yes.
President Ponte?
Abstain.
Item number two is a communication from the mayor and Thai agreements.
Just a question on our clarification, did that pass with four votes?
Yes.
I have five votes.
Okay, if you have, if you have five, then that's good.
One opposed.
Thank you.
The communication from the mayor and resolutions regarding Thai agreements for the downtown development companies LLC, the first being at 33rd Street and the second at 190, excuse me, 162, 186.
166. 166.
Motion to refer to finance?
Motion to refer to finance is the motion made by Counselor Kilby. Is there a second?
Are those, are those TIP agreements not Thai agreements?
Thai agreement, it says.
It says Thai, but I think it's TIP.
Move adoption of the resolution?
There's a referral on the floor that has been made to finance as made by Counselor
Kilby. There has not been a second, hearing no second to that motion.
To approve this, what are we doing?
It would be, you can adopt it, you can refer, you can do whatever you'd like, but it's already been, in fact, the TIP board, I believe, already met. I didn't make that meeting, but I believe that that has already...
I think in the past, we had some, before we give out TIPS, we've had some discussion in the finance as to the ramifications of the...
I'll second it to go to finance.
Motion to refer to finance has been made by Counselor Kilby, seconded by Counselor Long. Discussion on the referral to finance, Counselor in seat three, Counselor Kamara.
My only objection or my consideration is that, you know, this, this is a developer that we, we all well know, Anthony Caderro, and he's ready to move on this project, and time is money when you're a contractor and you wanna get the job done. Unless there's some significant reason why this ought to be held up, I think we ought to move it forward. So my only opposition to a delay is that time is money. This is obviously a good project from my perspective, trying to revitalize our center city, and I would hope that we would vote for it tonight. So I'll oppose the motion. Thank you, I yield.
I withdraw my second.
Second has been withdrawn. There's no current second to the motion on the table right now to refer to finance. I was made by...
Move to adopt the resolutions?
Hearing no further, second motion to refer to the committee on finances, a motion to adopt that has been made by Counselor Stephen Kamara. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Long. Discussion on the adoption, Counselor in seat five, Counselor Vice President LeBeau.
Do we know what the TIP board vote was? Says it was to approve, but do we know, was it unanimous?
I believe it was unanimous.
Mrs. Viveras? I'll allow her to come down to clarify that.
It's not necessary for her to come down.
Was the vote unanimous on the TIP board? The vote was unanimous.
Thank you, I yield.
Anything further?
I just wanna clarify the...
Counselor in seat three?
It's item two that is the item we're voting on, correct?
Yes.
Okay, 'cause that, those are the two properties that are owned and operated by Mr. Caderro.
No.
Two A and two B.
I yield.
Thank you. Anything further on the, on the, on it? Hearing none, is the motion to adopt that has been made by Counselor Stephen Kamara, seconded by Counselor Long. No further discussion, hearing none, roll call.
This would be to adopt both TIP agreements for both properties, two A and B. Counselors Kadim?
Yes.
Joseph Kamara?
Yes.
Stephen Kamara?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Malabri LeBeau?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Viveras?
Yes.
President Ponte?
Yes. Motion carries both items A, two A and two B.
Yes.
Next item on the agenda, item three.
The next item on the agenda is the communication from the mayor and a Thai agreement for Hanover Properties for 439 Pine Street. It's not a TIP, it's a Thai agreement.
It's a Thai agreement, it's not TIP agreement.
Exactly.
What is a Thai agreement?
Tax increment exemption.
Oh.
Move to accept the communication, adopt the resolution?
Motion to adopt the resolution has been made by Counselor Stephen Kamara. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Long. Discussion? Roll call.
What's, where's forty-three, 439 Pine Street?
This is the, I believe, if I remember seriously correctly, it's the former school that...
Lincoln School.
Former Lincoln School. Motion to adopt has been made and seconded, roll call.
On adoption, Counselors Kadim?
No.
Joseph Kamara?
Abstain.
Stephen Kamara?
Yes.
Kilby?
No.
Malabri LeBeau?
No.
Long?
Yes.
Pelletier?
No.
Viveras?
Yes.
President Ponte?
No.
It's a score.
The motion does not carry four fours.
Four fours?
Can't be.
Three, five.
What is it?
I think it was three, five.
Clerk can tell us she has the list. What was, did it pass or did it fail?
It failed.
There was one abstained?
I voted no. I voted no.
So to avoid any confusion, let's do the roll call one more time. You wanna do that, Madam Clerk?
I'm sorry, Mr. President, I had you...
Joe abstain.
I had you as voting yes.
You had me voting yet? I said no.
Are you sure?
Positive. No problem. Did it pass or did it fail?
Three, five, one abstention, right?
Motion failed. Next order of business.
Is item number four, communication from the mayor and a proposed ordinance regarding the municipal organization charter.
To adopt?
Second.
Motion to adopt has been made by Counselor...
Is the, is the adoption to refer to, I'm sorry, I don't...
Refer to ordinance committee, this is a proposed ordinance.
It would be appropriate to refer to the committee on ordinance.
I stand corrected.
No problem. Counselor Kilby refers to the committee on ordinance, has been made by Counselor Kilby, seconded by Counselor Long. Discussion on the referral ordinance, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it.
We have a communication from the mayor and a proposed ordinance regarding the commercial waterway.
Refer to ordinance?
Motion to refer to ordinance has been made by Counselor Kadim, seconded by Counselor Long. Discussion, hearing none, all those in favor? Opposed, the ayes have it.
Item number six is the mayor requesting approval of the donation of conservation land from the Greater Fall River Land Conservatory.
Motion to adopt the order?
Motion to adopt has been made by Counselor Joseph Kamara, seconded by Counselor Long. Discussion, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it.
Item seven is the FY twenty budget submission for the Water and Sewer Division.
Be appropriate to refer to the committee on finance?
Motion to...
Some moves? Motion to refer to the committee on finance has been made by Counselor Kadim, seconded by Counselor Pelletier. Discussion, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it.
Have the request for the appointment of Manuel Leach to the elections, Board of Elections?
Motion to adopt?
Motion to confirm the appointment has been made by Counselor Kilby and adopt, seconded by Counselor Long. Discussion, Counselor in seat five, Counselor Vice President LeBeau.
To the clerk, isn't Mr. Lee already on the board?
He's resigned from the board.
Thank you, I yield.
Hearing no further questions, roll call on the confirmation. Madam Clerk. And I will continue to say no to all new appointments at this point. I'm not gonna continue that. Reappointments, I'm fine with, for the most part.
On confirmation of the appointment, Counselors Kadim?
No.
Joseph Kamara?
Yes.
Stephen Kamara?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Malabri LeBeau?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Viveras?
Yes.
President Ponte?
No.
Item number nine, A, is a request for the reappointment of Catherine Clarkin to the library trustees.
Motion to take A through each together, please?
Motion to take all reappointments of A, B, C, D, and E, Catherine Clarkin, James B. Gibney, Barbara Jean, Joy Reese, and Kelly Susa Young, to their respective appointments, has been made by Counselor Kilby, seconded by Counselor Vice President LeBeau. Discussion, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion to adopt appointment?
The ayes have it. Motion to approve the appointments has been made by Counselor Kilby, seconded by Counselor Stephen Kamara. Discussion, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
So a need for...
Counselor in seat one, opposed, the ayes have it. No, there is not. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Congratulations, Mrs. LeBeau.
I believe she's the only one here, right? Yep. Thank you for sticking out the meeting. Madam Clerk.
Item number ten, I request from the Traffic Commission to amend parking ordinances.
Refer to ordinance?
Motion to refer to ordinance has been made by Counselor Kadim, seconded by Counselor Pelletier. Discussion, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it.
I have a communication from the purchasing agent regarding the disposition of surplus voting booths.
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve has been made by Counselor Kadim, seconded by Counselor Kilby. Discussion, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it.
The Chair of the Board of Election Commissioners certifying the recall election results.
Motion to accept and place on file?
Motion to accept and place on file has been made by Counselor Kadim, seconded by Counselor Pelletier. Discussion, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it.
Item number thirteen is also the Chair of the Board of Election Commissioners authorizing the preliminary election on September seventeenth and the municipal election on November fifth and setting the polling places.
To adopt?
Motion to adopt the orders has been made by Counselor Kilby, seconded by Counselor Kadim. Discussion, Counselor in seat seven, Counselor Pelletier.
Why coming so late, seventeenth? Usually everyone fought the food for the tooth.
They wanna make sure they give you extra time.
Okay.
All right. Counselor in seat five, Counselor Vice President LeBeau.
I'm fine with the election date, just a note to the clerk, we also have a council meeting that day.
We will have to. Is it rank choosing or is it just? Counselor in seat three, Counselor Kamara.
Yeah, is, is it by law that it's on the third Tuesday, if we could ask to the Chair? I, I thought it was the second.
The first or the third?
What?
She said it's the...
First Tuesday or the third Tuesday?
First or the third Tuesday.
Okay, thank you, I yield.
Here we go. Anything further? Hearing none. Motion to adopt, Counselor in seat seven?
The seventeenth is, is not the third?
It's the third Tuesday.
Third.
It's the third Tuesday of September.
It is?
Deterred.
Deterred.
Okay.
Thank you. Do you yield, Counselor?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion to adopt the orders has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it.
Committee on Public Works and Transportation at a meeting held on April first voted unanimously to accept the accompanying communication and approve the appropriation order. This is the order that relates to the library roof and the amount of three hundred...
Move to adopt the committee's report?
Motion to adopt has been made by Counselor Stephen Kamara, seconded by Counselor Long. Discussion, Counselor in seat seven, Counselor Pelletier.
I talked to Mr. Gallagher in between, in between the break and I listened to my colleague in seat number three, and it just, I don't like the vote, but I like to get the roof done, and Mr. Dias is not there. I think he was my worst problem, 'cause I didn't like what he had to say. So seeing that he's not there, and seat number three's encouraged me to vote for it, so I will support this. I yield.
Anything further? Hearing none, roll call, Madam Clerk on the adoption.
This would be to adopt the appropriation order.
No.
Joseph Kamara?
Yes.
Stephen Kamara?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Malabri LeBeau?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Viveras?
Yes.
President Ponte?
Yes.
Committee on Ordinances and Legislation at a meeting held on April third voted unanimously to recommend the accompanying proposed ordinance accompanied by an emergency preamble be passed through first reading, second reading, passed to be enrolled, and passed to be ordained.
Move adoption of the emergency preamble?
Move adoption of the emergency preamble has been made by Counselor Stephen Kamara, seconded by Counselor Long. Discussion, hearing none, roll call.
On adoption of the emergency preamble, Counselors Kadim?
Yes.
Joseph Kamara?
Yes.
Stephen Kamara?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Malabri LeBeau?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Viveras?
Yes.
President Ponte?
Yes.
Motion to approve all readings?
Motion to pass through all readings, as it may, by Counselor Kadim, seconded by Counselor Stephen Kamara. Discussion, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it.
Committee on Ordinances and Legislation at a meeting held on April third voted unanimously to recommend the accompanying proposed ordinance be passed through first reading since the miscellaneous traffic ordinance.
Motion to pass through first reading?
Motion to pass through first reading has been made by Counselor Kilby, seconded by Counselor Kadim. Discussion, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Committee on Ordinances and Legislation at a meeting held on April third voted unanimously to recommend the accompanying proposed ordinance be passed through first reading since the salary of the accreditation coordinator.
Motion to pass through first reading?
Second. Motion to pass through first reading has been made by Counselor Kilby, seconded by Counselor Kadim. Discussion, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it.
Committee on Ordinances and Legislation at a meeting held on April third voted unanimously to recommend the accompanying communication be approved. This was a street opening request for a pavement less than five years old at 471 Center Street.
To adopt?
Motion to approve has been made by Counselor Kilby, seconded by Counselor Pelletier. Discussion, Counselor in seat seven, Counselor Pelletier.
Is that job done?
We haven't issued...
What? Did somebody just say something?
I just said we haven't issued the, the road opening permit, so it's not done.
We haven't issued the opening.
Yeah, but I think there was a time or two that we've had a road opening before us and it was already done.
Oh, I see what you're saying, no.
So do we know if it's been done?
This has not been done.
No, this one hasn't.
Has not been done.
This was a request.
But all the work's been done and approved by the city, so everything's there, it's just now hooked up. What happened is they went to four units and they gotta put fire suppression?
Oh, that's the one.
So they got, the whole thing's ready to go, ready to be occupied, he just doesn't have the fire suppression system booked up, and they come with this, and we were kinda like stuck. We had to approve it. So it's just another one of those, everything's been done, it's been approved, and the guy was sitting there waiting for his OC, but he can't get it until, so what are you gonna do? Tell the guy, put fifty thousand dollars into the property, putting the four, four units in there, approved by all, all the city departments and all that type of stuff? And then in the end, they said, "Oh, you gotta get a fire suppression," so it's crazy. But that's what it is.
Counselor in seat seven?
Who's, who's the contractor?
Well, the contractors.
Well, whatever, he's just doing the job.
Come in, they knew it had to do with...
I just wanna know who's doing it.
I don't know who the contractor was.
It doesn't say, Counselor.
If we can get Counselor Pelletier with the contractor is tomorrow, that'd be great.
Crazy. Call a question?
Coastal?
Oh, coastal.
Coastal.
Coastal? Yeah, Bay Street. All right, no problem.
You yield, Counselor?
I yield.
Thank you. Motion to approve has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Committee on Regulations at a meeting held on April third voted unanimously to recommend the accompanying resolution be granted, leave to withdraw. This was a resolution with regard to an auto repair shop license at 851 Globe Street.
Move to adopt the committee's report?
Motion to adopt and give the, the item leave to withdraw has been made by Counselor Stephen Kamara, seconded by Counselor Pelletier. Discussion, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. The ayes have it.
Committee on Regulations at a meeting held on April third voted unanimously to recommend the accompanying order be adopted. This was an order granting the transfer of an auto repair shop license from Philip Deduka to Christopher Pinault, located at eight fifty-one Globe Street.
Motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt has been made by Counselor Kilby, seconded by Counselor Pelletier, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor? Oh, you have, I'm sorry. Counselor in seat seven, Counselor Pelletier.
No, I just want to tell Christopher Pinault that you got a lot of patience. I told you, you didn't have to stop tonight, but you listen to the whole meeting, and also stay for the rest. I yield.
Thank you. Motion to adopt has been made and seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Congratulations.
Committee on Health and Environmental Affairs at a meeting held on April second voted unanimously to recommend the accompanying resolution be submitted to the full council for action. This was a council resolution supporting House Bill Number seven seven one, reducing plastic bag pollution.
Motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt is made by Counselor Kilby, seconded by Counselor Stephen Kamara, discussion. Counselor in seat three, Counselor Kamara.
Yeah, just briefly, the City Council, just to get back to a little history, had voted to forward a resolution that I had sponsored along with Counselor LaBeau, to establish a local ordinance to deal with the issue, and I'm pleased that we all have received communication from the Dorrin School in support of this. However, the committee's decision was that rather than have a local ban, that we support a bill that our own state representative, Carol Fioler, is a cosponsor of, and it's a bill Number seven seven one by Laurie Melick and Senator James Eldridge. So, we thought it advisable to go along with a state approach to this issue, so we asked for support of the committee's recommendation.
Thank you. Counselor in seat five, Counsel Vice President LaBeau.
If I could just get clarification, it says, "For the City Council, go on record in support of this bill." Are we sending this out to our other two state representatives?
Representative file is a sponsor of the resolution.
I know, but the other two aren't on here, I'm not sure where they stand. Are we sending them communication that?
Well-
Counselor in seat three, you're a part of-
If I may just respond, the last line of it encourages Fall River legislators to support its passage, so the other Fall River legislators would be receiving this communication as well, and, you know, I'd be happy for a friendly amendment that we also send a letter to the, to the Great and General Court, so that I have it on record.
Noted, Madam Clerk. Counselor Vice President, still have a call.
So, we're sending this to our, our three state representatives?
Yes.
Thank you, I yield.
So, I would also move to amend that we send it also to the, the Great and General Court, so they have it on record.
Motion to send the letter with this passing resolution to the Great and General Court has been made by Counselor Stephen Kamara, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Kilby, discussion on the amendment. Counselor in seat five, Counsel Vice President LaBeau.
Just to the clerk, could you also send a copy of the Dorrin School communication with that? Thank you.
Hearing no further discussion, motion to amend has been made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Motion to adopt as amended?
Move to adopt as amended.
Motion to adopt as amended has been made by Counselor Stephen Kamara, seconded by Counselor Kilby, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
The Committee on Economic Development and Tourism at a meeting held on April second voted unanimously to recommend the accompanying order be adopted. This is the downtown urban renewal plan.
To adopt?
Motion to adopt has been made by Counselor Kilby.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Long, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Committee on Economic Development and Tourism at a meeting held on April second voted unanimously to recommend the accompanying order be adopted, as amended. This is the waterfront urban renewal plan.
To adopt as amended?
Motion to adopt, as amended, has been made by Counselor Kilby, seconded by Counselor Long, discussion. Counselor in seat two, Counselor Kamara.
What was the amendment? They just removed some of the properties?
Some of the properties have been removed.
I'm fine, thank you. Then I yield.
Motion to adopt, as amended, has been made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Whereas streetlights were replaced with LED energy-saving lights a few years ago, and whereas many of these lights now seem to be dimmer than before, and whereas streetlight brightness is very important in various neighborhoods, now therefore be it resolved that the Committee on Public Works and Transportation meet with the Director of Facilities Maintenance to discuss this very important public safety matter.
To adopt resolution?
Motion to adopt the resolution has been made by Counselor Kilby, seconded by Counselor Pelletier, discussion. The sponsor of the resolution, Counselor in seat seven, Counselor Pelletier.
Well, you know, they said the city's going to be a lot brighter a long time ago, and I'm still getting a few calls that the lights are dim, and I want a former city council to call me up, ask me what the problem is, so I don't know if they got a dimmer switch to save the money, or whatever's going on, but we'd like to have a few answers. The light's getting tired, the LEDs, forty-nine LEDs, so just see if we can find out what's going on. I yield.
Counselor in seat one, Counselor Kadim.
Keep it short. So, they are dimmable, so we can-
You can dim?
You can, yeah. Yeah. The LEDs, the LEDs are bright, so they're dimmable.
On the poles?
Yes, the lights are dimmable, so, just for the record.
That's unbelievable.
Thank you. Counselor in seat three, Counselor Kamara.
I thank, I thank my colleague in seat one for informing us of the dimmability of our lights. However, I haven't seen any, it would be helpful as a member of this committee if we could be, get some specifics as to where are there dim lights? I haven't seen any. I'd be interested in knowing where they are, to confirm that they are in fact dim, so if my colleague in seat seven could get us a list of streets that have dim lights, we can check it out. I yield.
Counselor in seat two, Counselor Kamara.
On your way home, just drive by Bedford Street.
East Main Street.
I've been, it also came up, someone mentioned to me, and I wanted to thank my colleague for putting this resolution in, that the lights were very dim, and it's hard to see, and it's true, and I said, no one's complained to me about this, you're the only person that's complained to me about it, and it was just recently, and it was just, I was looking into it, but it's amazing to find out that they are dimmable, because they definitely dim these lights. If you drive up Bedford Street, you will see you walk the sidewalks, it's hard to see. Then I yield, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor in seat six, Counselor Long.
Since we had the meeting tonight with the school committee, I think any chance we have to make the city brighter, we should go for it.
Thank you very much. Counselor in seat seven, Counselor Pelletier.
Does seat number one have some question?
Sure.
Do I have a switch that dims all of them?
Don't I, I'm not an electrician.
Oh, you're not an electrician?
What I will tell you is that when they first initiated it-
Yeah.
-with Amaresco and, you know, obviously, I think it was Bishop Electric that did a lot of the work, they were really, really bright, so there was complaints about how bright they were, and they are dimmable, so they went back out and dimmed them.
Okay.
I wouldn't kid you.
Kudos to you, Counselor, thank you very much. Anything further?
Really, really, really bright. Excessive bright.
You yield, Counselor in seat seven yields, no further discussion, motion to adopt has been made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Whereas medical and recreational marijuana dispensaries have recently opened in the city of Fall River, and more will be opening shortly, now therefore be it resolved that the Committee on Ordinances and Legislation convene to establish an ordinance to limit the number of licenses available to eight.
Motion to adopt?
Motion.
Motion to adopt has been made by Counselor Pelletier, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Long, discussion. The sponsor of the resolution, Counselor in seat seven, Counselor Pelletier.
Well, you know, I just feel that eight is enough, and my colleague in seat number one gave me some information that it can go through ordinance, and don't have to go to the voters, and we don't have to have more than eight. So, through ordinance, I'd like to have just eight in the city of Fall River, I think it's enough. Right now, you got a medical one that's open on, next to Dunkin' Donuts, I forgot the street, and they ain't doing no business at all. So, I'm just wondering, how many we need? If you've got eight, I think it's enough, and that's the way it feels, so we'll see what the ordinance does, and my colleagues. With that, I yield.
Thank you. Counselor in seat three, Counselor Kamara.
Well, I hope my colleague in seat seven follows my advice, and my advice is that we let the market decide. This is a legal business. We all promote and say we support capitalism, and we enjoy the free market, doing what it can to create jobs and to allow people's choices to be made by that free market. So, I see no reason, it's not as if we're, it's not as if we're voting on an industry that has any history of being destructive or detrimental to the peace and tranquility. In fact, some may argue the opposite point, that the industry is an industry that promotes peace and tranquility. So, I don't think there's a need for this resolution. If there were, in fact, a need for curbing numbers, is there a need to curb the numbers of establishments that sell alcohol? I don't know, but again, I would say that the market should determine that. So, let the market decide about these businesses, why should we regulate something that's not, why should we be addressing a problem that doesn't exist? So, with that, I hope we'll vote no on the resolution. I yield.
Counselor in seat one, Counselor Green.
Thank you. Just first point of clarification is that we do have restrictions on the number of licenses that we can issue for alcohol, and on, on and off-premise licenses for both beer and wine and full alcohol. The second piece is that to colleague in seat seven's point is that the regulations from the Cannabis Commission Control allows a municipality to put regulations or limitations on the number of licenses, so they leave it up to the community to make a determination if they so want to limit the numbers. I, for one, I think if we had a strategic plan and a location as to where these things were going to be located, that's, you know, one thing, but unfortunately, it's, we missed that boat on the zoning, as we sometimes often do, and I agree with my colleague in seat seven, I think there should be some type of limit on it. I yield.
Anything further? Hearing none, on the adoption of the resolution, roll call.
On adoption of the resolution, Counselor Kadim?
Yes.
Joseph Kamara?
Yes.
Stephen Kamara?
No.
Kilby?
Yes.
Valaby LaBeau?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Viveras?
Yes.
President Ponce?
Yes.
Item number twenty-six is a request for the removal of curbing at ten thirty High Street. In addition to the anonymous letter, we did receive petitions opposing this request.
Move to forward to Committee on Public Works and Transportation.
Motion to refer to Public Works and Transportation has been made by Counselor Stephen Kamara, seconded by Counselor Pelletier, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
And may I ask that when the meeting is held, that the objection, people who have petitioned, receive notice? Thank you. I yield.
Item twenty-seven is the granting permission to John Vincent, care of Michael McHenry, for removal of curbing at seven sixty-three Oak Grove Avenue.
To adopt?
Motion to adopt has been made by Counselor Kilby, seconded by Counselor Long, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Item twenty-eight is an order granting permission to Carl Machado Trustee for removal of curbing at fifty-seven Oak Street.
Motion to adopt has been made by Counselor Long, seconded by?
Second.
Counselor Kilby, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor? Opposed? The ayes have it. I guess nobody, nobody's opposed, or nobody's in favor of that one.
In favor.
I'll, I'll take that as everybody's in favor and nobody's opposed, the ayes have it.
I have a question on this item.
The one that we just voted on?
The twenty, item twenty-eight.
Yeah.
Motion to reconsider.
Is it, is that required? I'm just noting, noting, I, is this for Oak, is this to be on Oak Street or on Bank Street?
Oak Grove Avenue?
Oak Street.
Oak Street.
Because Oak Street runs, what?
Item twenty-
Oak Street runs north and south, so there isn't a north side of Oak Street. North side of the property facing Bank Street. So, it couldn't be on the north side of Oak Street, because Oak Street only has an east side and a west side. And I would-
Well, if that's correct, and the publication and everything is all wrong, so it's going to have to be reheard.
Let's Google tell us.
Is that what it's meant to be, on the, on Oak Street, or is it supposed to be on Bank Street?
It's on Oak.
It's on Oak, so Oak, Oak doesn't have a north side.
No, no.
It only has an east and a west.
Would you like to table this item?
Maybe refer to Committee on Public Works and Transportation.
Motion to refer to Public Works and Transportation, is it? Madam Clerk?
So, move to, there should be a vote to reconsider, or do we have a vote to adopt?
Motion to re-
Move to reconsider.
Motion to reconsider has been made by Counselor Stephen Kamara, seconded by?
Second.
Counselor Kadim, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Now, motion to refer to Committee on Public Works and Transportation.
Second. Motion to refer to the Committee on Public Works and Transportation has been made by Counselor Stephen Kamara, seconded by Counselor Kadim, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor? Opposed? The ayes have it.
Item number twenty-nine is an order granting permission to Wayne Convoy to open, or to maintain a secondhand article store at fifteen oh-three Pleasant Street.
Motion to adopt is made by Counselor Long, seconded by?
Second.
Counselor Kilby, discussion. Counselor in seat seven, Counselor Pelletier.
What's your?
It's the first time we don't get a letter from the chief?
It's approved by the chief.
It's approved? Very good. I yield.
Thank you. Motion to adopt has been made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Item thirty is an order granting permission to Colbert Enterprises for underground storage at three seventy-two Plymouth Avenue. This is actually a decrease in storage.
Any objections on this?
No.
No complaints.
Motion to adopt has been made by Counselor Long, seconded by Counselor Pelletier, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor? Opposed? The ayes have it.
Can I just, north and south? Oak Street does run north and south, for the record, so, just according to Google Maps, but-
It's already been referred.
Yeah, it runs north and south, but there, but this is-
That's what you, did you say with the-
Removing the curb from the north side.
It's already been referred.
Oh, I see what you-
We're going to keep the referral and move on to the next order of business. Madam Clerk.
I am thirty-one is an order granting permission to Christie's Realty Limited Partnership